I'd like to call the November meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We welcome all of you here to let you know we want to hear what you've got to say. And if you've got something to say, if you would go to the podium and you'll have five minutes to state your opinion and one time at the microphone. And when you, would you state your name and your address when you do that? And speak into the microphone. I know I've got a loud voice, but... So we've got commission, we've got approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, an update on the cases?
Yes ma'am, thank you. The only update we have is the rezoning, I believe it was from the September meeting on Speedway Drive is moving forward to City Council tonight. So they'll have a public hearing for that item. Two items on your current agenda I wanted to point out. Item number four, which is a request for recovered material processing on 15 Old Plumps Road. The applicant has asked that that be tabled to the December meeting, and so we're recommending that be done as well. And then number five, Arbor Valley Development proposing a 144 apartment units at Fox Run Avenue and Fox Run Parkway. Again, the applicant is requesting that be tabled to December, and we concur with that request as well. We did want to go ahead and ask the commission tonight if they so choose to bring item F-12A, which is the minimum lot width in the C1 zone, off the table when you get to that item. The other item we feel we can still have some discussion on, but we would like to go ahead and move forward with the recommendation on the lot width. Other than that, happy to have our new commissioners here today and look forward to working with you all.
Yes, we'd like to formally welcome Mayor Eddie Smith to be on the Planning Commission with us, and Councilwoman Lee Whitley to... The City Council has elected her to be on the Planning Commission, so we're glad that she's here. Any new business?
Yes ma'am, the first item under new business is a request for a preliminary and final plat subdivision at Bay Court. The applicant is Emily Key with Three Keys Properties LLC. Subject property is located between Bay Court and Ray Court. This is in the R5 Zone off of Lee Road, Lee Street, excuse me. The five lots, as I mentioned, are on the R5 Zone. All five lots meet minimum lot width of 7,500 square feet. All meet the minimum lot width of 60 feet, and so are compliant in that regard. The way that this is shown is two of these lots are accessed off of Ray Court, excuse me, Bay Court, which is to the south here. Those are the ones that are kind of have a horizontal orientation. The three lots are also running onto Ray Court, you see here to the north. Again, those are more vertically oriented. These lots all meet minimum requirements for the zoning ordinance. What we have noted is that both Bay Court and Ray Court are smaller than typical city streets usually are. I believe it's the Bay Court, the right-of-way width is 30 feet, and then kind of varies and gets wider. The actual pavement is 20 feet wide, which is what is required for a city street. On Ray Avenue, Ray Court to the north, that right-of-way is, I believe it's 20 feet wide, and the asphalt is roughly 10 to 12 feet on that side, which is smaller than most city streets are. And so I've kind of gotten some pictures of you, and this is taken from Google, but you can kind of see the angle. It's very kind of narrow road there. The traffic on neither of these streets, especially with adding a couple of lots, would be very significant. However, we do know that there is still need to make sure that infrastructure utilities can get back to those lots to be accessed and continue on down the street. And then important, as important is to make sure that especially on Ray Avenue, that the fire access can be served to the properties in case of emergency. Typically, fire access requires a 20-foot-wide fire lane, and that's something that is going to have to be determined and worked out and through some further discussions, I believe, between the Public Safety Department, the applicant, engineering, and planning. Because of these items, we feel that the lots are in compliance, the streets can be brought up, but we do feel that there needs to be some more consideration on how this is done and how there may be potential turnarounds where the streets end. As such, we are recommending preliminary plat at this time, so that those further discussions can occur and we can look at how to meet these requirements, subject to the following, that they install a hammerhead turnaround at the end of Bay Court or Ray Avenue. Maneuver and turnaround, especially fire trucks and garbage trucks, and increase the asphalt width of Ray Avenue to 20 feet. Again, these are the recommendations as they are now. I think in some further discussions, there may be some alternatives we can discuss with the applicants to come up with solutions to meet that, maybe some other routes. But happy to answer any questions. Ms. Key is here representing the application as well.
Engineering?
Yes, as Mr. Mosley stated, Ray Avenue has dedicated right-of-way that is subsstandard to what we require for a minimum right-of-way. And we requested, and it is shown on this plat, that the right-of-way on the south side of Ray Avenue be dedicated to the city, so they're dedicated, right-of-way from the property to the city for right-of-way. This would meet the minimum right-of-way requirements for that side of the road. And then, you know, right now, there'd be a... Right now, there's currently a driveway that accesses those three properties on Ray Avenue, but again, the public safety is going to fall in superior to what engineering requires on that. Other than that, Engineering Department has no comments or concerns with this proposed preliminary plat. Opelika Water states that water is available from a six-inch mine, six-inch main on the south side of Bay Court, but there is no water main on Ray Avenue, so that water access would need to be decided before a final plat is recommended for approval. And Opelika Power serves this subdivision.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Give us your name and your address, please.
Okay, I'm Freddie Torres, and I live in right now in like 3103 Matthew Street, and I have one small land in that area, and I'm not really sure is included in what he marketing and the page. I have 11, 111 Wright Avenue, isn't the area what he talking? That piece of land is like included two avenues, one side and the Wright Avenue and the other side, and it's by side by side. I think that piece of land is like, I'm not really sure, it's maybe 50 by 200? And I don't know if exactly in this, in this old five pieces property, what are they talking about?
No, sir, I believe your property is here just adjacent to the plat that's being discussed. And so this doesn't, it's adjacent to your property, but this wouldn't change your property in any way.
Oh, okay.
So I think you're right here. Did you receive the letter?
Yes.
Yeah, so I believe you received the letter, but this would not necessarily affect your property one way or the other.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Public hearing is now closed. Let me be sure, we're doing this a preliminary plat?
And what we're recommending right now is preliminary plat with a general agreement that the lots meet the requirements, but there are some issues that we feel need to be worked out in the engineering and construction phase of this. I think there may be some opportunities for the, different opportunities for how service and utilities are accessed of these. And so while the applicant has asked for preliminary and final plat, at this time, we are only recommending preliminary plat approval.
Preliminary, okay, just to be clear. Commissioners, do I hear a motion?
Motion for preliminary approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have one quick question. So Matt, so the width of the road for Ray, would that be a City of Opelika requirement? Or?
Development part?
Yeah, would it be the development?
So that is a requirement of our regulations, that there be a certain width and a certain travel lane, especially if we're taking a fire or trash truck down through there. I think, again, I think there are, there may be some possibilities that some of this could be potentially accessed from, especially with the size of these, some of these could be accessed from Bay Court as well, because the applicant has property on both sides. And so I think those are some of the discussions that need to be had with the applicant engineers and whatnot, to see if there's a way to provide service to these, whether that's going to require improvement of the road, or whether that can be done off of the existing, some of the existing right-of-way.
And that will occur before?
Typically, in most cases, any improvements for a subdivision are borne by the developer, unless there is some sort of agreement in place between the city and the developer.
Okay, and the goal is to have an agreement in place before final plat, right?
The goal would be to make sure we know everyone is on the same page as far as how those would be served before final plat, and so that may be as quick as next month.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Item number two is a conditional use, the first of four of those conditional uses. This is for the applicant on this item is Rudy Sardinas, representing the property owner Viking Sun Incorporated. This is at 809 First Avenue, and so this is between 8th Street and 9th Street on First Avenue. Just to give you an idea of the property, this is the building that they're proposing to look at. The applicant is proposing to move their existing church into this building. Churches are conditional uses in all zones, and so they, we look at them at any new location. The applicant's proposing to occupy this approximately 5,000 square foot building in the C1 zone with their church also having some, potentially a coffee shop and co-working space. The coffee shop and co-working space are not uses that require conditional use approval in the C1 zone, they're allowed by right, and so would be allowed provided that they meet building code and whatever requirements there. However, there before you with the aspect of it that is a church. The congregation is currently meeting at 1201 South General Road in the Seventh Day Adventist Church. The applicant's proposing to have services twice a week, Sunday approximately 9:15 and Wednesday evening at 6:30. They note the sanctuary would hold approximately 100 people. In reviewing this, because it is in the C1 zone, we typically don't require, and the buildings are built to the lot line, we don't typically require parking, landscaping, some of the other items. They will have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission to any exterior renovations, and they will have to probably spend quite a bit of time working with our Building Department to make sure that the improvements to this building, because it is largely an unimproved warehouse, will meet building requirements for an occupancy use. In looking at the times the church meets, we feel comfortable that based on the size of the congregation, there is parking available on street. There's also the opportunity to work with adjacent businesses that are not open at that time to see if they can share some parking, but based on the size, we don't feel like this would create a parking issue in the downtown. Based on those requirements, we are recommending approval of the church at this location as submitted. And again, they will have, I believe, quite a bit of work they'll need to work with our Building Department on to make sure that it is, meets the requirements for occupancy. They've provided some exterior elevations of what they think potentially somewhat could look like, and this will of course have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. Some interior kind of renderings of what they plan to do, coffee space, meeting space, and then a small auditorium space. With that, we are recommending approval. I'm not sure if the applicant is here or not, but I'm happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Engineering?
Engineering Department has no comments or concerns regarding. Opelika Water states that there's an existing two-inch copper service to the site, but a multi-meter vault will need to be installed to service the building and its uses. And then Opelika Power currently services this building.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this subject? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do I hear a motion?
Conditional use.
With staff recommendations? Okay, didn't have any, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, number four has been tabled.
Number three?
Oh, excuse me, three.
Is a request for conditional use for multifamily apartments on Society Hill Road. This was before you, last year, I believe, back in November of that year. A request for conditional use approval on a piece of property that's Zone C2. It's located at 335 Society Hill Road. The applicant is Brett Baswin with Forsight Group LLC, representing Broad Metro LLC and the property owner. The... Previously, I believe last November, when it was before you, the applicant was proposing 309 units on this 27-acre piece of property. They've come back with a revised plan, which is 265 units, so dropping it by approximately 44 units to the plan you see here. The proposed development would have 159 one-bedroom units and 106 two-bedroom units. You can see that it has most of the frontage along Society Hill Road. There is also a proposed road that goes out towards the Katz Landing Development connecting to Freddie Way near the QT fueling station and Texas Roadhouse. They've also included some amenities to this site, including a clubhouse right at the entrance, pool, and then you have, I believe, a dog station and small park at the middle of the development. The property to the north of this is part of the Chapman Creekside Cottage's development that has previously been approved. There is some single-family residential just to the north, right here in between. To the south, you have an area that is also R1, which shows... Which is owned by the Katz family here, and then across the street is the former Opelika Auburn News station, paper location, and some of the exterior of the warehouses from Wyndham Industrial and a storage facility. C2 allows 16 units per acre. The current density proposed is 9.8 units per acre, so it's well within the density of the zone and within fairly similar to the density to the north. The master, our long-range plan shows this area as being mixed residential, and so proposed residential would be in compliance and alignment with the future land use plan. Here you see the landscape plan in a couple of different phases, so there's some buffering to the south, buffering along the street, along Society Hill Road. As you move north, you also have some buffering on some of the areas adjacent to the frontage, and then you have a fairly significant area both to the north and south that is proposed to not be graded or left natural. And so there's opportunity, we hope, for some undisturbed buffers or buffers that would be amended to make them acceptable for our residential requirements. Building materials, the elevations are somewhat similar to what was previously shown before. They show a mix of cement board, brick or stone, and then kind of traditional asphalt roof. I think the previous plan had a little bit more brick going up the side, but they're fairly consistent with what they previously proposed. And here you see the clubhouse building located at the front. This, this previously, and site previously received a variance for parking based on the, from the zoning board of adjustment, based on the number of single units that are in the development. So as I mentioned before, a good, I believe it's over 40% of the units are, or excuse me, over 60% of the units are one-bedroom units, meaning they're likely to be either occupied by one or two people, and so the, what we tend to see with this on a national average, or national basis, is that the parking requirements are not as, our current parking requirements of two units per acre tend to be overdoing what is needed actually on site. And so they are in compliance with that previously approved variance, and it has improved since the reduction in number of spaces. They do provide the dumpster and compactor requirements, that'll have to be coordinated through our, our Opelika Environmental Services Department to make sure that is what is required. Again, we've noted the landscaping, they do meet the minimum requirements for that. We've noted that there needs to be some, we need to confirm some buffering to the south and north. But overall, we are recommending approval of this, subject to the following, that they add those buffers to the, the, all four sides of the development meet the Gateway Court or Plating requirements with masonry consistent with provided elevations. Garbage facilities being closed on all sides gated with a pay fence height, so that the dumpster is not seen outside of the enclosure. All utilities should be underground except any overhead required transmission lines. All mechanical and HVAC units screened from the public right-of-way, any gates will need to be coordinated with Opelika public safety departments for emergency entry. At least two points of entry for life safety codes should be required, and both drives will be open for access for residents. Mr. Baswin is here representing the applicant, if you have any questions.
Engineering?
The applicant be required to submit a site construction grading plan for the drainage utility post-construction and roadway installation to the Engineering Public Works Departments and other utilities for review and approval. Once this approval and all other utilities have been approved, a permit will be issued for construction. The improvements to the turn lanes on Society Hill Road are approved as shown on the site plan. Engineering has no other comments or concerns regarding this conditional use approval. Opelika Water states that a water service is available from the 16-inch main along Society Hill Road. Due to the number of total units, it is recommended that the development install a second feed from Freddie Way and Katz Landing along the proposed secondary driveway for water redundancy. Both Alabama Power and Opelika Power will service this site.
Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this item? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion for approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, may I ask where the second entry point is?
So, right now, they're showing it coming through the back. This was, would be where the golf suites location is located, so it would connect into... And it doesn't, can't quite see it here, but this is the corner behind the QT station near the Texas Roadhouse, so it would connect into that corner on the backside there, giving access for the residents all the way through.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Item number four is also a request for conditional use. This is for a manufacturing processing facility located at 1525 Opelika Road. The applicant is Tyler Heron with, for Leslie Green Dudley. The applicant reached out to us after reviewing the application and has requested that this be tabled by the Planning Commission to allow them to address the comments raised by the planning staff regarding the use. So we recommend that the use be tabled as well.
We're tabling it at their?
At their request.
At their request. Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, ma'am, in this case, you would need, if they don't withdraw it, which they haven't, we would need to request that you vote on tabling that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve the tabling of this item?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion about this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain, any against? Any abstain? Okay, thank you.
Item number five is also a conditional use request. This is for a multifamily development located at 600 Block Fox Run Parkway on the corner of Fox Run Parkway and Fox Run Avenue. This is located between Fox Run Avenue and USA Town Center. Property is Zone C2. The applicant is Arbor Valley Development LLC, representing Michael Beach and Crook Creek. The applicant is proposing 144 multifamily units located in the C2 zone. Again, staff reviewed this, provided a recommendation of denial, and the applicant has asked that the item be tabled to allow them to address potential concerns and see if they can find a solution that would work. And we are agreeable to that request to be tabled.
All right, so this is a vote to...
I make a motion. I make a motion that we accept their...
A second?
To table it?
To table, yeah.
To table it, okay. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion? Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Item number six is a request for rezoning and amendment to the land use plan. This is a request from Bill Perry, representing James David Perry. This is at 25 Anderson Road. Subject property is 20... Subject property is 20.1 acre. The map shows it is R1, that's, we need to get that updated, but it is currently R3. The applicant is proposing to rezone it to R4. Currently, the property is vacant. This was before you, I believe, back in, earlier this year. It went to the city council. Earlier this year, this was a request to be rezoned from R1 to R3. The planning commission provided a negative recommendation to city council. City council ultimately decided to approve the rezoning from R1 to R3. And now the applicant is coming in to request it go to R4. We've provided kind of a breakdown, the differences between R3 and R4. Basically, the difference of 10,000 square feet in area versus 7,500 square feet, three and a half units per acre versus nine units per acre. One is considered to be medium density versus higher density. And then the R3 as additional uses only allows primarily duplex units as a conditional use, whereas R4 allows duplexes, apartments, and townhomes as conditional uses. Review this based on the future land use plan and the surrounding zoning. Based on, on those items, we have felt that R3 is an appropriate zone. We're not recommending approval, or, excuse me, recommending a denial of the request to go to R4. As such, recommending that it's similar to any change to the future land use category. The applicant has provided a kind of layout showing what they propose to do. These are roughly sixty-eight, sixty-foot wide lots, and I believe they are closer to a 10,000-square-foot area, but narrower than what's allowed in the R3 zone. And I think they're also showing that a fairly significant stream in the middle of the property. So they're proposing to do this, I believe, to be able to get thirty units within the area prior to the stream. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I believe Mr. Perry is here representing the application as well.
All right.
And I did want to point out, you, I believe, all received a letter from one of the adjoining property owners with their concerns regarding the rezoning as well.
Engineering?
Engineering has no comments regarding rezoning of this property. Opelika Water states that water is available from sixteen-inch main on the west side of Anderson Road, and Opelika Power is the backside of Opelika Power Service territory.
All right, this item calls for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against?
Hello, my name is John Moore. I live at 2714 Anderson Road. I have lived at that address for forty-three years now. We're here to formally express our opposition to the proposed rezoning of that twenty acres from R3 to R4. Recently, this same property was rezoned from R1 to R3 back in March, representing a significant increase in residential density. During the initial rezoning request in March, the planning commission, as Matt said, recommended that the city council deny the change from R1 to R3. At that time, the city council also received a petition signed by 58 local residents clearly demonstrating strong community opposition to higher-density development on this property. Despite the absence of formal plans or site proposals detailing how the land would be developed under the new zoning, the city council proceeded to approve the zoning anyway. Now, here we are, four months later, after the initial rezoning, a second request has been submitted to rezone the property again, this time from R3 to R4. The frequency and timing of these rezoning applications intensifies concerns about the developer's uncertainty and lack of a clear plan for the land. This ongoing ambiguity suggests there's still no definitive vision or commitment to a specific development plan for this property. Such lack of clarity raises important questions about what the ultimate use of this property will be, and whether the interests of the community are being adequately considered in the decision-making process. Approving this request without defined development plans undermines both the transparency and integrity of the city's planning process. There are no R4 zone properties within miles of this community. A zoning change to R4 does not reflect the scale or character of the existing neighborhoods and will be wholly inconsistent with the established development pattern of the area. Such a change would be wildly illogical, even given the context of the surrounding communities. The property owner requesting this zoning change does not reside in our community, our city, or even our state. As a result, he will not be personally experienced in the long-term impacts that this rezoning could have on surrounding homeowners, their property values, values, and the overall character of the neighborhood. Zoning decisions should prioritize the interests of those who live and invest in this community daily. Residents depend on local government to safeguard the character and livability of their community. Granting this rezoning without a clear community benefit would appear to serve private interest rather than the broader welfare of the current residents of Anderson Road. And we did not receive a letter about this rezoning, this current one. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Julie Moore, and I reside at 2714 Anderson Road. First of all, I've had a lot of anxiety about this, and most of you have heard my story. And for those of you that have not, I'm going to make it brief. I've lived at that property for 61 years. That's how old I am. I was born there. This land was my grandparents', and I value and treasure what I have. I could have sold it a long time ago and made money off of it, but money is not the issue for us. It's where we live, it's where we've raised our children, it's where now our children are making plans to live. And so we are invested in this location. We pick up trash on the side of the road. We attend the community events and support Opelika, not people who don't live there and want to just make a dollar. I am requesting that you deny this, as I requested, that it be not developed from R1 to R3. I'm the one who knocked on doors and got the neighbors together and got the petition with almost 60 signatures on it. Even people were calling our house and wanting to come get their name on the list because they did not want this. And to tell you that I was not disappointed, extremely disappointed, by my councilman not listening to my concerns and ignoring 60 residents that live next to this property would be, I would be telling the lie. I didn't tell you that I was very disappointed in that. It's changed to R3 now. There's not anything we can do to go back now, but cramming more housing into that area at this point is only going to make things, changing it to an R4 is only going to make it worse. The streets are busy, the, you know, the, we've had several police officers speak and tell you how dangerous even the police officers have pulled out of their own driveways and been hit because of the traffic. This is going to really increase the traffic. And I must say, the trees, the animals that love this property, that are already showing up on our property, you know, because they're being, we're being, this area is being developed all around us. We have about 20 acres, and I love animals and I love trees, and so I'm okay with the animals coming, but I'm just saying, they're being pushed out of their habitat as well. It's R3, and I'm requesting that you not make the change to R4. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your service. I'm the bad guy. I'm the brother that's up here representing my brother. And I do live, I live in Auburn. My name is Bill Perry, and I live at 1611 Jemison Place. The, the purpose for this rezoning is actually to be able to accommodate the ingress egress because only one road can go in and out of it. If you look at the, the neighborhood that's across the street, I developed that on behalf of my family years ago, this North Town, and it, it was R3 at the time, and the zoning for R3 at that time would allow for 60-foot lots. And that's what that, that particular subdivision is, if you look that up. Virtually every single one of those lots is a 60-foot wide lot. That is all that is being requested here. When we carried it through originally with the R3 zone, we were unaware of needing to have that second ingress egress point for fire safety. And so this is only coming in here to be able to accommodate that 30, or that ingress egress and max of 30 lots that can be put on the property because of that. And because when you go to a 70-foot wide lot, which is an R3 zone now, you're going to have to cross that stream, and that's extremely cost prohibitive, and the whole purpose of this development is to be able to bring workforce housing to the area so that it can supply the employees for the tech park and for first-time homebuyers, too. I've got four kids that are trying to buy homes, and there's just too cost prohibitive to be able to purchase. So that's, that's the purpose for it, and that's it. It's not going to be an increase in density, it'll actually be a decrease in density. North Town has 79 lots in it. When we carried this in here originally for the R3 zone, again, ignorance is no excuse, but we were not aware that we would have to have the second ingress egress. And so we're dropping back, that actually was going to have 50 lots in it, this one is only going to have 30 lots. And that, that's, that's the extent of the development, so it's much less than what we'd originally have brought in and had approved for the new rezoned R3. So I appreciate your time, and are there any questions that I can help you with?
Did you say workforce housing?
Yes, sir. And first-time homebuyer housing. So it, they're going to, the goal, don't hold me to this because of economics, it should be, homes in the high 200s. And that is incredible to me that that's first-time homebuyer price point, but that's, that's where we're trying to be. If we cross that stream, then it's just adding more, even more expense to the lots and increasing the cost of the homes. Any other questions I can help with? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Hello, my name's Linda Guy. I lived at, I live at 2422 Anderson Road.
Would you speak up, please, a little bit louder?
Hello, my name's Linda Guy. I live at 2422 Anderson Roads, and I've lived there a little over 31 years, and I've seen a lot of development during that time, already with the Northeast Industrial Park, with North Town subdivision, and Anderson Lakes. At the present time, there is some more housing going up that's already been approved at the end of Anderson Road and Andrews. The land is being cleared for housing, is my understanding. And also behind our acreage, Hidden Lakes is being developed for housing. So I don't think, in my opinion, that changing from R3 to R4 is beneficial at all for the residents on Anderson Road. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public hearing is now closed.
So we would ask you to take these, I guess, as two separate items, two separate votes. One would be a recommendation to city council, first, for rezoning. Second would be whether or not to amend the future land use map.
So vote on A first. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to deny requests for rezoning based on staff concerns.
Any discussion?
Yes, Matt, is it a, is it a negative or a positive response to city council?
Yeah, it would be a negative recommendation to the city council.
What the motion is as well?
Do we need to amend the motion? I think he said deny, right?
Oh.
And, I guess we need to amend the motion.
Well, I guess if you want to clarify the motion, that it's to...
Clarify.
It's a motion to deny requests for rezoning based on staff concerns and to send a negative recommendation to the city council.
And so that's, yeah, the city council ultimately has that vote, so the planning commission as a guiding board sends a negative recommendation, if that's what goes on.
Does that change the second? Any discussion?
I guess the, real quick, just to make sure, I know the reasoning behind that is based on...
I think, well, your concerns that you expressed in the, in the information provided with us. It seems to me we're creating an island right in the middle of R4, right in the middle of R1 zoning. I think it's inconsistent with the, getting to the next item inconsistent with the land use sufficient.
All in favor to, this is, we are voting to...
Send a negative recommendation.
Send a negative recommendation to city council. All in favor of sending a negative recommendation to city council?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion carries that we send a negative recommendation to city council.
To amend the future land use map, which is a up or down vote by this board, not a recommendation.
Is, is there a reason to...
We have it on the, on the agenda. I would go ahead and just, if that's the commission's desire to, someone make a recommendation to deny a change to the future land use map.
I make a recommendation to deny future land, uh, change map.
Okay, any discussion about this? All in favor of denying a change to the land use map?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Hey, Matt, before we leave this subject, let me ask one question. As it relates to, you went, they went from C3 across the road at one time, which the developers trying to just express his concern that it, that the old C3 is now the C, almost the C4?
R3, R4?
I mean, R4, excuse me, R3 to the R4. There's sort of a gray area there. Is there any way in the future, going forward, that you could deed restrict the number of lots in an R3 development if, when a plat's delivered?
Cities really can't, to my knowledge, add restrictions to deeds in that way. We, we do, and many times through our, our master plans or PUDs and things like that, there are restrictions on the amount of development. The other thing would be, to a degree, at a certain point, if, if property is designated as common or open space, then it can't be developed additionally without going through some processes, and so you would, it'd be very difficult to re-increase the number of lots in some of those, but it is, the way subdivisions are set up with the state of Alabama, generally if they meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance now or in the future, then planning commission is hard pressed not to approve them.
Well, I mean, what I was getting at, with this site plan that he presented, I was just wondering if we, if that ever did get approved, if we could say, okay, if the, if the developers were restricted to that number of lots going forward, maybe there's a way you can work with them to limit the number to be developed.
No, sir, I mean, the only way to really do that within our ordinance currently is through a PUD or a planning unit development.
All right, number seven.
Number seven is a request for rezoning. This is for WRO LLC property, the property owner at 2209 Fayette Parkway. This is a 681 acre site. It's currently zoned in... Uh, it's currently zoned M one in the former primary. The applicant is requesting to rezone this from M one to a C three zone. And if you look at the map here, this, this property is zoned M one. It's kind of an angled piece of property located between Lafayette Parkway and the railroad tracks here, which is the backside. On the other side of the railroad tracks is the, uh, the lumber mill located there. And so what you have is, when you go north of the, the, the bridge on four thirty-one Lafayette Parkway, this is the only piece of M one zoning that is out there. Also, looking at M one zones, uh, these zones are typically, uh, areas where you have heavier uses, and those uses typically take up generally more space. Uh, this, because of its angle and, and geography, probably would have limitations developing as an M one use, M one uses. Uh, there are many more uses available in the C three zone, even though it is typically considered a less intense zone. It doesn't allow a lot of heavy uses, but it allows a lot more uses, including, uh, office, retail, lots of uses that would be considered most commercial uses, lots of things maybe that might be considered light industrial, and then it does allow some residential uses as well. The proposed zone is also, you'll notice as you go north, you see the C three to the property just immediately to the north of this, which was former Wilson's Woodyard, and across the street, and then you've got some residential zoning across Lafayette Parkway. As such, we feel that the, uh, the C three zone is more appropriate both for this property and has potential to create less issues for the surrounding properties as well. Looking at the future land use plan, we initially included a, a change of the, the future land use, but realized in this that the, uh, the current designation is consistent with the proposed zone as well. So with that, we are recommending approval, a, a positive recommendation to city council for rezoning this from M one to C three, both the Gateway Corridor, Primary Honor. I believe Mr., uh, the applicant, Mr. Obertree is here as well.
Engineering.
Engineering has no comments regarding the proposed rezoning approval. Opelika Water State said there is water supply available from the sixteen inch main on this property, but they also have no other comments, and Opelika Power will service this territory.
This calls for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we, um, send a positive recommendation to city council for, um, changing the, um, changing it to a C three? Yeah, change the zoning, that's the word I was looking for.
Ms. Cannon, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries to send a positive recommendation to city council.
Item number eight is a two-part request. This is a-
Do we need to change the land use map?
No.
Okay.
Item number eight is a, a request for rezoning and amendment to future land use. Uh, this is for a property located on Cunningham Drive. Applicant is Barrett Simpson, BSI Incorporated, representing Gateway Developments LLC, Morrison LLC, and Clark Adams Investments LLC. Subject property you see here is zoned R four. Uh, this is adjacent to the Gateway Planned Unit Development that extends from Cunningham Drive to Gateway Drive at Thomason. Uh, the applicant, applicants have purchased this property, uh, which is approximately five point one acres, and they're proposing to rezone it from R four into the planned unit development so that it can be part of the overall master plan. So let's see. Here you see that new proposed master plan. They've noted thirteen pods located, uh, on the north and south side of the future extension of Thomason Drive. This is a, a new road that connects Cunningham to Gateway and Thomason. It is currently under construction at this time. Uh, and so the applicant is, is proposing to create this new pod thirteen, which is a commercial convenience corner adjacent to pod eight. Uh, they have noted in your, uh, in your packet, there's a narrative which shows the proposed uses in that, uh, that, that area. It's much like your typical permitted use table, so think, certain things are allowed, certain things are not allowed, if there's nothing there. Pod thirteen, what you'll see is it is primarily commercial uses, grocery, offices, government buildings, banks, those type of uses, convenience store with gas, daycare center, restaurants, and then a kind of light, uh, interior industrial uses, veterinarian clinic, and pharmacy medical uses. The other part of this is, there was a, some errors when this was originally came in, which showed, uh, numbers, pod ten and one, these are right along the, the heavy commercial corner of Gateway Drive and where this road would come out at Thomason. Initially, there was considered the ability to have a fueling station, but it was inadvertently put on item, or pod nine, which is interior. So that use would probably naturally go towards the X here of the development, kind of closer to the main interchange, and so they're requesting to change that from, uh, being in pod nine to in ten and one. And then there is a request as well to allow a, a package use in, uh, items one and ten as well, uh, associated with certain, uh, larger grocers. They're, they're looking at trying to, uh, bring in, these, these would be a package facility, packaged liquor store that would be located on these two pods. In reviewing this, uh, we find it to be, uh, relatively in compliance with the remainder of the master use plan that is provided here, this, uh, and in compliance with the proposed future land use map for the, the new addition. And so we are recommending approval of this, uh, subject to, uh, the, the requirements of the general PUD, which was previously approved, including all building materials, screening materials, its gateway corridor, all utilities to be underground, sidewalks be on both sides of the public streets, development provide cross access through pods where they're similar, and then, uh, all previous uses and conditions approved. We have also added the requirement that any package store, uh, be at minimum of at least two thousand square feet.
Engineering.
Engineering has no comments regarding this proposed rezoning. Uh, Opelika Water states that water is available on both sides of this development, on Gateway Drive and Cunningham Drive, and the developer of the PUD will be responsible for bringing water along the future Thomason Drive to the point of connection needed for each development. Connections at both ends will be required. Uh, Opelika Power will service this development and PUD.
This item calls for a public hearing. You see anyone who would like to speak for or against this?
My name's Robin Wine. I live at eight oh nine Shelby Avenue. This never gets easy to talk. I commend y'all.
That was impressive. It really was. Matt, if you could go back to the map that showed the-
The pods?
Yeah.
That one?
Okay. Um, and I'm sorry I'm having this down, I'm not speaking into it, I'm sorry. The corner there, it's kind of blocked. Do you see that? It's like an outset of the map.
Oh, right here? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. That has sixty-six houses in it. Houston Homes built it about fifteen, twenty years ago. Sixty-six families live there. Now, when this all got started with the Cutford Road, I, I call it Cutford Road, Extension Road, I'm sorry. I mean, what a great idea, right? You know, to be able to cut through over to Cunningham. Cunningham Drive, though, is, is residential. There's not a commercial thing on it, not anywhere near it. Not in the Mill Village. I know we've got the, the nice little Mill thing coming there, which is like a mixed use, which will blend in with something like this. But right now, the way that it's proposed with this pod thirteen, uh, I believe there's a, a, a convenience store that can be put there, is that right, Matt? In pod thirteen?
Yes, ma'am, I believe that is correct.
Just a suggestion, why not leave pod thirteen as residential? It's five acres out of a hundred. It would protect the sixty-six homes that are right there on Cunningham. It'll protect part of the Mill Village, which has a huge park, well, it's not huge, it's a nice park, um, which is a historic part of our town, albeit little. And keep the, the lighting and the gas stations and everything else more towards, like you said, the heavy commercial end on the other end of this road, of the extension. Just a suggestion. I think that those people would appreciate it, that there would be homes or apartments or duplexes or twin homes, anything, instead of a convenience store or strip mall or anything like that. It just makes sense. You know, the, these, the Moores did a great job of talking about protecting the integrity of the neighborhood. In fact, in Matt's staff recommendation, he states, "The uses for each pod are based on compatibility with surrounding uses or general location." The surrounding uses right now on this end of this street are definitely residential. It's not changing anything else about all the other commercial stuff that's gonna go up on this extension, you know, up until this five acres, because I, I guess that's already been approved and cannot be changed. But on this five acres, I think it would be delightful if it would be only residential and not commercial. And the other thing I want to point out about the, um, liquor stores, uh, up until now, in fact, right now, the rules are a conditional permit only. That way, y'all have, the city council has, the city has control over liquor stores and can revoke those at any time when they see that going south. You don't have that here. If you give this, this development the right to build these liquor stores, it's absolute. It, there's nothing you can do about it. I, I think that's a, a bad mistake, and I would, I think y'all should vote against that or whatever it is. Change it, make a recommendation. I, I don't know. But that's, that's, and that's for, I guess, for discussion for later on too. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioners, do I hear a motion? We are making a motion.
This would be a, a, uh, positive recommendation to, positive or negative recommendation to the council.
To city council? Okay. Do I hear, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I was just trying to, this is going to city council, is what I was trying to get to. Do I hear a, a motion?
Can we, can we make a motion with the thing, the table it with some of the-
There, I mean, there is always a, a option to table it. I'm, I'm happy to answer it. If you have any questions or anything you want to discuss, I'm happy to answer anything out there as well.
May I ask a question? So, uh, as Robin pointed out, pod thirteen, I believe it is, has, uh, no residential use and all commercial use. Is, is there a way to change pod thirteen?
I, I think we'd need to discuss that with the applicant. The one thing I, I would clarify, and I, I should have pointed this out earlier, is pod thirteen is, is right here adjacent to the road. Originally, when this was first looked at, I think the road was coming in a little bit higher, and that's why, uh, at that time, pod eight, which is just above that, it's kind of pinkish color or whatever, uh, it is, uh, commercial as well. Now, there's some different uses between the two. There's, uh, I believe pod eight doesn't include some of the automobile uses in it as well. Uh, it does still include some office, uh, uses and commercial uses, things like that. And then there is some, if you look at the, uh, so here's, here's that pod above it, and then you do have the, the C three zone adjacent to that, and that's kind of why I, I think when we originally looked at that, recommended, made a, a positive recommendation to you, is there was some commercial up there. Now, it is, this is moving, as Ms. Wyatt, uh, uh, rec, or mentioned, it is moving closer to Beckett Woods, the development down here, and so, uh, you know, I'm happy to look at that as, as, if, if y'all like, or if y'all would want to talk about the issue more.
I think the representative of the applicant is here.
You want me to go again?
He's behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Blake.
I'm sorry, Cannon, if I'm not aligned.
Blake Rice, BSI. Ms. Wyatt did bring up some, some points, and I do have some responses to that, and the first of which is the commercial concern at the proposed corner of the Thomason Drive extension and Cunningham Drive. The city has seen fit to change the uses that will be, um, that will be seen in this area by creating a, what has to end up as a commercial node there. One thing that the city, that this commission is not, could possibly not be taken into account is the fact that that Thomason Drive extension is only one portion of the overall traffic pattern modification plan for that area. That road is also going to hit a roundabout, move, and then continue all the way on and become an extension of Veterans Parkway. So when, when you start looking at that, Beckett Woods is sitting there fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years, I remember when it was built, and it was in a much different place. Cunningham Drive was a much different place. There are houses along Cunningham Drive, and some of them sit on three and four and five acres. Cunningham Drive, as well as the Thomason Drive extension and the Veterans Parkway extension, will absolutely create a commercial node at this area. We're already seeing it with density developments, three hundred yards north of here, the, the Mill Village project, I can't think of the name of it, but all of that is changing the nature of this area. A lot of those Cunningham Drive properties are sitting on three and four and five acres, and as this traffic continues to increase, which it is going to, because that is the nature of what we're doing to driving the traffic patterns in that direction, you're gonna start seeing those single-family residential properties start coming in with rezoning requests, and they're gonna be trying to change to commercial areas and more dense residential areas. So while the, the thought process of Beckett Woods is there, yes, but the commercial area does not contact Beckett Woods. It's on the other side. Beckett Woods is on the south side of the new Thomason Drive extension. The commercial area would be on the north. And I do believe that you're gonna see large changes in this area. We're already starting to see it. There was a lot of thought given to that specific idea. It was not just, hey, we think of commercial area over here, we probably won't see any commercial development- Um, it was not just, hey, we think of commercial area over here. We probably won't see any commercial development on there for a decade. But proper planning suggests that that will be a commercial node in the future, not a single-family residential area. I think that was pretty much the only concern revolving around traffic. The package store question. Um, Matt and I, as well as a proposed commercial developer, have had many conversations about this. And what is going on is you're seeing a large proponent or a large contingent of big-box retail developers starting to have secondary in-house, um, package stores. If the state of Alabama did not require that a separate door be provided for that uh, facility as part of the larger use, then we wouldn't be having this conversation because the package store would be considered an ancillary use to the big-box retailer. And that's what this is about. And if I cannot get those, that approval, I don't have a route to lure those big-box retailers into this area, which was ultimately the, the plan for those first two pods out on to Gateway Drive, was that was gonna be a large-scale retail development. Um, and that's the reason Matt was concerned about the minimum square footage, to which we looked at it, and two thousand square feet is much larger than any of the package stores that you typically see around town that go into adjacent to fueling stations or, you know, the, the ones that take up the little, the little rental areas and you end up with a package store. Most of those things are six hundred, eight hundred, maybe twelve hundred square feet, stuff like that. This is a two thousand square foot minimum, so it protects just exactly what, what you're typically concerned about seeing with package stores long-term. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This could be for you, Blake, or you, Matt. So, just so I'm understanding, the, the future Thompson Drive Extension, as it kind of cuts south right here, essentially, it's going to differentiate between the res- the current residential and the lot that we're, that is on the table right now for a vote above it, right?
That's correct.
So, the commercial lot, that this thirteen, Pod thirteen, is not directly adjacent to the residential, it's across the street, correct? Okay, and that, that road is pretty much set right there? That's not, that's not gonna change?
That, that road, and Scott can speak to that, but that contract has been lit.
So, and, and, and just north of there is, is already commercial, right, Matt?
This piece is, is commercial. Uh, the property above this is zone commercial. There's no development on it currently, but it's all part of the former Mill Development.
So, I guess, I guess what I'm asking then, to draw us to a logical conclusion in my mind, if we were to keep that as a R-four now, then the only thing that could be there is residential, which is gonna be actually adjacent to commercial property in the future. Is that a?
Yes, sir. If you, if you left it at R-four, i- it would likely, uh, you would see some requests possibly to develop as either multifamily or, or townhouses. It's, it's unlikely to develop as single-family just because of the, the nature.
Sure.
Left there, but.
Right.
Uh, I, I do believe that a, a commercial use is, is likely the best used based on the Pod eight behind it.
Right.
What's in that use? I, I don't know if there's any concerns on the specific uses there, but I, I think the use itself as commercial would make sense.
Thank you.
Are those, uh, on the south side of, of, of the Thompson Drive Extension, uh, are those lots? Are there homes there?
These are lots, yes, sir. So, uh, these, you, you got, you've got, you've got a fairly significant contention lot right here on the corner. And then you have, I believe, six lots that go back along what will now be, they'll, they'll basically back up to the road. Uh, so the lots face into the interior of the subdivision. This would be the backside of the lots against the new road. And I believe the road, is the road, Scott, eighty feet wide?
It's, it's gonna be a three-lane roadway with sidewalks and shared paths on each side of the road, so. Yeah, it'd be, the, the right-of-way ranges from eighty to a hundred and twenty feet, but yeah, approximately eighty, a hundred feet right-of-way there, so. Uh, the way it's grading out now is with, with the sidewalks being constructed, it's, there's still gonna be quite a buffer between the sidewalks and the backyard residential houses as well.
You can back to the map.
Yes, sir. This one?
Uh, no.
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so those houses.
Right here. Yes, sir.
Yes, there are houses there.
Yes, sir, there's, uh.
Sixty-six in that subdivision.
They, there are, yes, there are sixty-six in the neighborhood. There are, uh, I believe, six that back up directly to this road.
Will back up directly. What is to the left of that piece, the same question?
This piece?
Yes.
This is Cunningham Drive.
No, okay, come down.
Right here?
Come down, no, further down, there.
Okay, so this is actually an inset showing down here. So, this, this blue piece is actually this blue piece. They've kind of cut off right here at this corner. This one? This one, yeah. So, here you kind of see, this is the, this hatched area is what we're, we're discussing right now. Uh, this is the residential neighborhood.
Beckett Woods.
Beckett Woods, I believe that's correct. Uh, again, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots that would back up to this road, and, and they will back up to the road no matter what happens. Uh, I, I think what we're talking now is just what uses would be across the street.
And when you say the road, that's the Thompson?
That's the Thompson.
So, this property is on the north side of?
It would be on the north side of Thompson. Extension. And then, as, uh, Mr. Rice said, there'll be a roundabout right in here that will come in and then go back and, uh, connect from here directly into High Point or High Pack Drive, which is, again, has some, some different, uh, industrial and commercial uses on it.
Yeah, and the, um, the City Council has, um, mitigated that there's some wetlands as you go across, uh, and where the new road will go in through, and to get to High Pack. So, they had to buy some, uh, wetlands to mitigate the ones that we'd be going through.
The, the extension of High Pack, which Mayor Smith, uh, talked about with mitigations, that, that project is designed, and we're shortly, uh, to bid it out for construction early next year. So, that, that phase will come pretty quickly also to connect all the way to Airport Run, uh, through to the, to the, uh, west of Cunningham. So, it's coming quick, for sure. This, this road coming through is coming quick.
So, there are three places that we're talking about. We're talking about the, the place on the corner that has houses uh, across the street from it.
So, you're talking about item number thirteen, or Pod number thirteen, which is a new commercial corner, which has, has no uses other than the current R-four zone with it. They're trying to bring it into the pod. Uh, the other two would be modifications to, uh, Items one and ten, which would allow, uh, convenience, fueling station, and package store in both of those two pods. Uh, the, the requirements in, for convenience stores are that there's no more than one per pod. Uh, and then the package store, as I mentioned, we would request that it be limited to stores greater than two thousand square feet.
And how big is that number ten pod?
Number ten pod is eleven point six acres.
Okay.
And it's three point one three acres, or number ten is three point one three acres, number one is eleven acres.
So, those, those three changes to this map?
I believe the three changes to the, the map.
Matt, Blake, I'm looking, why wouldn't you consider maybe, uh, taking some of these concerns off the table and maybe looking at converting thirteen pod into eleven, and making it sort of match the eleven pod requirements, which would eliminate some uses that, that may be, you know, unwanted on Cunningham one day? Matt, could you pull up the matrix again?
Yes, sir. So, here's, here's the overall matrix. Uh, and again, thirteen is the one, I think, that has most changes here, and you'll see the uses that are, are posed here.
And I guess what Shelton's maybe looking at, Blake, is maybe taking it back to them, what, what it might eliminate. And I don't know if this is a, a good or bad idea, but the, the items that it kind of takes off the table are things that are after hours at night, like a gas station that's open till ten, eleven o'clock on there.
I don't know that I would have an issue with that.
Okay.
I'm, I mean, this, this is going to be a commercial node.
Yeah.
But the idea is more about neighborhood commercial than it is anything else.
Right.
If there was, uh, if there was an idea of, of a few of those specific items in thirteen that we wanted to strike,
Okay.
I, I don't have an issue with.
Maybe work with Matt and the developer.
So, looking at these two, if you look at, at Pod number eight and Pod number thirteen, and Pod eight is the one directly above Pod thirteen, the new one. Pod eight, the uses allowed in it are general commercial, grocery, uh, office, bank, uh, contractor's office without any sort of outside use. And then, the big thing between eight and, and thirteen is that it doesn't allow auto maintenance, uh, convenience store, gas station, or daycare.
Just low-impact commercial is so much better than the convenience store and that, and the, the higher impact. Does that make a world of difference to people who, who have lived there, Chris?
If, if that's something that the, the commission would wanna do and the applicant doesn't have an issue with, I, I think, you know, we could, we could ask them to amend that, to show Pod thirteen to match Pod eight, which is, again, takes off the auto convenience, gas station, and, uh, oil change facility, uh, light, light repair and, and daycare facility.
Can, can I make a motion that we table this, uh, and give the developer time to work with the staff to come back with?
Speak a little bit louder.
Yeah, can I make a, a motion that we table this, giving the developer time to, uh, reconvene with the staff and come back to us with another proposal?
Yes, sir, you, you absolutely can. Uh, I think he's willing to make those changes now.
If, I would, you know, a- absolutely have no issues with, with a motion being made for Pod thirteen to match the uses in Pod eight today.
And these others, I, I mean, I sort of like the table idea too, 'cause we, we, we just, although we saw it Friday, but it's, you know, now we're here on Tuesday talking about it, so.
I, I would ask that I get some clear directive on what we're tabling it for, if it's more than the change to, from Pod thirteen to Pod eight uses, simply because, otherwise, I have nothing else to talk to Matt about.
Well, I think we may be talking about houses on the corner, but, um, I mean, to just look at that.
I think, Blake, I think we can tighten it up a little bit more. Uh, just gi- give yourself a little bit of wiggle room and give, uh, tighten it up a little bit more, or give yourself more flexibility. I'm not sure you wanna go all the way to, I mean, you may have more flexibility.
I have a bit of a timeline issue is the reason.
Well, I was gonna, I, I'm gonna ask, I mean, really, from a road standpoint, do you have a timeline that you wanna sell a piece soon, soon to somebody? Is that it? Or is it, y- you just wanna get?
The only thing that I have a timeline issue on is the pa- is the package store issue. I have a commercial developer that's ready to move forward with.
Oh, on, 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 on?
On the gateway side.
On ten, yeah, okay.
That's, that is my issue. Um, but if it needs to be tabled, it needs to be tabled. We can deal with it.
I just feel like there's too many questions, too much up in the air.
I, I would like some directive back on the package store, um, simply because if, if.
If, if, if it's, if it's included in a commercial structure you're describing, I think, I think this board will, would support that. I think if it's a freestanding liquor store, then you're gonna have a problem.
Right.
Okay.
I didn't understand, but we don't have any rules for a package store. I mean, does ABC have to approve it?
No, ma'am. A- ABC does not have to approve it. The City of Opelika has to issue a license for it to be there. City Council has a separate.
So, every, every liquor store?
Every, every establishment that sells alcohol in the state of Alabama has to have a separate license, unless they are in an unincorporated area and the county itself does not regulate. Inside City of Opelika, doesn't matter if you approve it here or not, it is used, but it still has to go to City Council for its, uh, alcohol license.
Okay.
Matt, if these two items are tied together, they can't be separated?
Hey, Ken? Uh, if you wanted to move forward with an amendment to the pod, you could do that. If you wanted to move forward with just adding, uh, you probably couldn't add it just to, you, I think you could move forward with a change to allow, uh, the fueling and package stores in Pod one if you wanted to, or one and ten if you wanted to, with conditions, and, and not move forward with the rezoning if you wanted to, or you could.
All right, so could you go back to where the, um, liquor store is on the, on the matrix, 'cause that's on the first page, right? Right, but on the matrix, so we're looking at changing the matrix, right, to include?
The two corners at Gateway and Thompson Drive.
Here you see, uh, package, which is one and ten.
Right, so that's what we're, we're, that's one thing that we're, you're, we're requesting to change, is to add that to one and ten, correct?
Basically, uh, they, they noticed, uh, that one and ten, uh, again, they, looking at it with a, a developer, looking at that use. And then, convenience store auto, uh, was originally shown in nine, but not in ten and one, which didn't make sense, because nine is interior to the development, ten and one are the commercial corners.
So, this would be, if we were to make a motion, which I know we still have a motion we gotta deal with on the, on the table, but if we were to make a motion on this, it would basically be to change in accordance with this proposal for Pods one and ten.
Uh, you would make changes to Pods one and ten.
And nine, and nine.
And nine, in, in accordance with, well, actually, nine, I, I must spoke earlier, nine didn't show a convenience, nine did show a convenience store, and it still does show a convenience store on it, so it, it's not changing.
So, can we?
I messed that one up. That was supposed to come off.
This is already complicated enough, but.
Nine was supposed to come off.
How many?
So, do we need to take, if, if we're going to, if we're going to address the liquor store, do we need to take off, or the, the ta- the motion?
I would say, if you wanted to move forward with anything, you would need to, uh, send a positive recommendation, uh, for the planned unit development related to the uses allowed in Pods one through twelve, or the, the changes to Pods one and ten. And that's it. And, and keep the, any change to the five point one acres on the table at this time.
All right, with that, with, do we need to, go ahead.
I just wanna ask about car washes.
Yes, ma'am.
How many are allowed across the street from each other?
One.
Well, there's one, you know, I could walk to it.
There is a maximum of one per pod, so, and that includes car washes, oil change facilities, uh, tire stores, you would, and that, that's, those uses are allowed in Pods, uh.
But I just mean, there's a car wash across the Veterans Parkway, not, not Veterans, but, um, Gateway, just across the.
Well, yes, ma'am, and, and those are already currently in this, already have been approved.
Yes, I know. I'm, I'm just saying, are we approving another one to go across the street? Yes, we are. It says convenience store with gas station, auto, car wash, maximum of one per pod.
Yes, ma'am. So, the convenience store with gas station means it is attached to a gas station. Car washes in general are reviewed under auto maintenance, otherwise.
They don't get, they don't get built in that manner anymore. They don't get built in that manner anymore. That is verbiage straight out of the zoning ordinance. That is how it is, it is stated in the zoning ordinance.
So. Yes, ma'am, uh, a, a car wash in a, a freestanding car wash, like you've seen more recently, is considered auto maintenance. It's not the, the convenience store with gas station car wash. That is some older verbiage when every gas station had a small car wash behind it, like you see at House Smith's.
It's still a car wash.
It is. Yes, ma'am.
Can, can I make an amendment?
You can take car wash off for all I care, they don't get built anymore. Um, I haven't seen a gas station built with a car wash in ten years. Um, nobody builds them like that anymore. That is a use out of the zoning table, and the uses that are stated in this are verbatim from the zoning ordinance. So that's how a gas station is put out in the zoning ordinance.
Can, can I, can I amend my proposal?
All right. Do we have a motion of any kind?
I guess there's a motion on the table, there's a motion right now to table.
To table, yes.
So. I would, I think the best thing to do would probably be to vote to deny that motion to table if you want to discuss it anymore. And then if you want to table it, or table it or a portion of it, you can make the motion again, but just to clear that off.
Can we?
Let's vote on the table.
What, Blake was?
The motion to table has not.
Let's make a vote on it, let's, let's, let's vote on the table, okay?
Yeah, I, 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 I wouldn't try to amend any motion to table, I would, what I would do is I would. Deny the motion to table for the time being and then make whatever motion you'd like, and then if you want to table a portion of it, that's, or all of it, that's fine again.
So, do we just withdraw the?
No, ma'am, I, I would go ahead and vote on the motion. But I would, if you want to discuss it anymore, I would vote to deny that motion.
If I may, I'd like to request this item be tabled.
You what?
I'd like to request this item be tabled in its entirety.
Oh, oh.
Thank you, Blake.
So you would still need to vote on that motion to table. It is seconded.
All right, so we're voting on a motion, any motion, a motion to table the, um, the matrix.
The entire item.
The entire item. All right, do I?
It was already seconded, so you just need to vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstain? Okay, so we've tabled it.
Item number nine is also an amendment to a master plan. This is, uh, located in the Wyndham Industrial, Wyndham Plan Unit Development. This is total fifteen acres, I believe it's actually about five acres that is in question here. You'll notice with the original two thousand five Wyndham PUD, the area north of Gateway Drive, near Societal Road, the, the purple area here is shown as kind of office and industrial type uses, primarily industrial uses. The red area here is commercial, with this area being called out in the planned unit development as office uses. During the, uh, last year, uh, the gentleman who owns that, uh, you'll find that. Excuse me. CPP Investments LLC represented by Blake Rice, would be his time. They, Evergreen Site Works expanded their, uh, laydown yard, construction yard, uh, over the entire property, and this is previously what it generally looked like. It was kind of, uh, sporadically wooded with some, uh, trees. The, not, not knowing that their use was not appropriate on the entire site, extended it the entire way to Gateway Drive. So you, here you see kind of a large fence, they have a, a large gravel, uh, construction yard, uh, with equipment laid there on the property. When we realized this, we reached out to the, the applicant, uh, letting them know about the issue. We've been in discussions with them about how to most appropriately fix, uh, this issue and, and come up with a solution that works, uh, for the city. In reviewing this, the, the primary reason for the office at this location was to help buffer, again, uses from adjacent residential. From what we've seen, the use of this property as storage has not created a significant impact on the, the adjacent properties, other than the fact that it is aesthetically not attractive and is, is not, uh, ha- has no landscaping or, or the other principles of the zoning ordinance, dealing with kind of aesthetics and, and buffering. The applicant has come back with a request to amend the planned unit development to allow the use to continue to remain on this site instead of having an office building placed here. And in doing so, have come up with a landscape plan to kind of help buffer and screen the use from Gateway Drive and the beginning of Wyndham Industrial Drive. And so here you see kind of the overall layout, their building facility at the very top. They're showing a couple of additions to the building with this as well, creating a formalized, uh, parking lot for employees with landscaping requirements. Here you see the landscaping for the upper area shown. And then what they've done is provided a significant landscape plan for the lower area along Gateway Drive and Wyndham Industrial, uh, to their first main entry point. What you'll notice is this is a very mixed, uh, kind of multifaceted landscape plan with a double row of evergreen, who knows are arboritas, uh, to kind of create general screening with some magnolias mixed in. Then you have a, a couple rows and, and, uh, significant planting areas on the corner of more floral and, and decorative plants with some larger trees along the outside to kind of provide height and scale. Here you kind of see some of the artist renderings of, of the site. Waterfall in the back, we'd ask you to not pay attention to, I don't believe they plan on building that piece. Along the other side here, uh, showing again kind of that mix of varied, uh, landscape requirements or landscaping materials. Reviewing this, we feel like this is an appropriate, uh, way to mitigate and, and restore the general ideals of the, of the planned unit development, that the, the areas be screened. This site, uh, doing the math, if the fifteen acre site total would require about a thirteen hundred landscape. Overall, with this proposed plan, they're providing approximately three thousand landscape points, which is, uh, about a hundred and fifty percent more than what is actually required. So, or I guess two hundred and fifty percent more than what's actually required, so. In general, we, we do recommend a positive recommendation to the city council for this. We are asking that the landscape material be planted at such a, a height and, and size because it is intended to make an immediate, uh, impact, that it be planted at full height as far as the minimum requirements of, uh, for, uh, planting material. As so not allowing, generally when we talk about planting material, we say it needs to be planted so that in two to three years it gets up to that height. In this instance, we would want the, especially the arboritas and those screening materials, be planted at a six foot height, so that they provide that immediate impact to the site. But I'm happy to answer any questions, you may have, Mr. Rice is here representing the applicant.
Engineering?
There are no comments from the, uh, technical staff.
This item calls for a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, Matt, is, um, right next door, we've got C two. Is that, is that corner, is that where the old man museum was?
Uh.
Okay.
It, there's a piece in between there, uh, that has a cell tower on it.
Okay.
Uh, right, I guess it's part of that overall property, but yes, sir, this is the, the old man museum.
Okay, and is, was, is this type of, like, yard allowed in a C two?
Uh.
Just curious.
It would not be allowed in a C two, but I would also say that the man museum, the, the property there is, has been somewhat grandfathered in as well, so. Uh, has some outside stories that is not, will not be allowed in a C two either. I think, I think the use as per, per, excuse me, the use as presented is appropriate based on the use adjacent to it next door.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
The last item we would like you to consider is the request for amendment to, uh, twelve A to the text amendment for the minimum lot width in C one zone. This, again, is an amendment to allow C one, uh, lots to be, uh, have a minimum lot width of zero. They, they basically would default back to building code. In general, right now, the minimum lot width for C one is sixty feet. Just kind of a quick scan through here, these are the lots off the county tax maps, which are not exactly right, but what you'll notice is most of the lots range anywhere from, uh, twenty to twenty-five, thirty-five feet in width for much of the C one zone. There are some as small as, I think, sixteen or seventeen feet, and some are much bigger where they've been combined together, but this provides more flexibility, the same way we don't require a minimum setback in the C one zone, and we don't require a minimum lot size, lot area in the C one zone. We feel this would provide the maximum amount of flexibility in our historic downtown. And it is a common practice in downtowns that those lot widths be designated at zero to allow them to be more historically, historically accurate than the building code requirements. Uh, so if, if the commission is okay with that, we'd ask that you take item twelve A off the table and vote on it.
So we make a motion to take it off the table and then have a public hearing and, do I hear a motion that we take twelve A off the table?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? So it's been taken off the table. And so now, um, this is calling for a public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this, um, zoning ordinance. Seeing none, our public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do I hear a motion on, um, this seven point three A section?
And this would be a positive recom-
A positive recommendation for the, the downtown.
So moved.
Okay. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Twelve B?
We are asking that it should remain on the table for the time being.
That's remaining on the table, do we need to vote on that? Okay. All right, and then we've been given, um, we're, we're meeting next month, um.
Next month, you will meet on December the, uh, sixteenth, I believe it is. No, that's next year. Uh, I apologize.
Yes, on my calendar.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, we did include a copy of next year's proposed schedule in there. We'd like to go ahead and get y'all to approve it next month at your meeting so that we don't have any confusion as we get to next year's holiday season.
Okay. So we'll prove it next month.
Yes, ma'am, we will bring that before you as an item on your agenda next month.
Do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, the November meeting is.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
In the books.